Well, we are in the way.
What to the agency to the way of the United States of America and to the Republic of Canada. One nation under God, and it is all where we get justice.
Well, we're supposed to have engineers here with us. Let's put a few pages here and we'll discuss some carpeting. Oh. Issues to the agenda. Motion to approve. May that second approve the agenda by the same sign. Minutes. Motion to approve the minutes as written as I've said. Motion to make second approve the minutes as written, all favor say by the same sign. Oh, same sign, carry. Okay, now. As far as we know, they're still coming, right?
I haven't heard any difference.
Brad's online.
Yeah, I'm on the line. See, Josh. Just running about 10 minutes late. So if you guys want to move through your agenda, he should be there in about 10 or 15 minutes.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Oh. Oh, this is an asking partner for the front of the. The auto.
Yeah.
Lamont. That's. Oh. Definitely perk things up.
It's the same color. It'll just look fresher.
Might look a little blue.
Yeah.
And it's just someone of the guys just can solve this.
I'm getting the glue off underneath might be kind of a complicated thing. Cause it's all disintegrated and stuff underneath, but um we'll end up blocking off the entrance for a good chunk of a day.
Are they doing this for that? Or this is the labor and everything?
No, this is just the materials. I think the guys can handle it. It's just to scrape off the old glue and put some new glue on and there's no pad or anything. It's just over the cement.
Perfect landing. Resume.
Other duties as a scientist, right?
I don't know. Early Brad holds is gonna be another 10, 15 minutes.
I didn't break any speed law to be limited at all.
Okay. Motion to approve. Why? Okay. Motion to make second and the purpose of indoor office carpet for the front city hall was to take the same by the same sign. Both same time, carry. Okay. Back up, why don't you come up? So calls for here.
You guys wanna be on camera or you want him on camera? All right. In the hot seat here.
Do they have the updated version?
Yes.
The update. Okay, perfect. Excellent, so. Okay, well, we can run through this quickly. Brad, if you if I skip over anything or have anything to add, just feel free to chime in. So um we're on through through our agenda here. So for the sewer and water system replacement project. The at the last meeting, we did present the engineer's agreement for the project. Just wanted to, based on that, see if there were any questions, comments, or anything on that.
I have the signed agreement here.
Okay, okay.
Um, I just got it sent tonight, so email it tomorrow.
Okay, okay, that sounds great. Um, so next next item would be the product scoping. We can run through, run through that. That's the bulk of the content that we provided there. So um start out the estimated construction cost. So overall project to maximize the US Army Corps of Engineers grant, we're we're kind of looking at a budget of three, three million one hundred twenty five thousand for for construction at this point. So um I guess to add to that, the estimated construction costs are based upon what we've kind of seen in the past. And of course, with construction costs being up in the last couple of years, we're taking that into account as well to set that budget and prepare the estimates based upon similar projects we've completed. So so moving into the project scope that that we kind of went through at, I guess Brad, Brad was there. I was able to attend the scoping meeting, but so option one, kind of, I think the kind of the main main component that you guys are looking at is replacing the lift station and moving it north, north there and extend, putting in a new force mean to to kind of eliminate that 18 inch gravity trunk line that goes down to the current lift station at the lagoons. Of course, that that component of the project would would abandon that existing 18 inch clay main and manholes and the lift station at the lagoon. So that that portion would, we're estimating that one point or one million three hundred sixty thousand dollars for construction and below that is kind of the layout. It's a conceptual kind of layout.
Brad, you have a generator itself included?
Brad, yes, that did include generators as well. Okay.
Yep, that includes a generator and then also it includes that from that manhole 90 extending over to the new lift station.
Yeah. Um, so moving, are there any questions on that component? Any that kind of pretty well settled up on on including that component. So, okay. Um, moving on, we have option two A. That that this part of it would would kind of address some of the non, I guess, non uh, I don't know what what to say, but the the some of the ugly ugly situations with some of the alignments of the sewer mains going underneath residential homes and of course, under the pasta plant there. So we would look at realigning that that portion that come cuts underneath the homes to follow the roadway to the south and then cut east north of the pasta plant and then over to the railroad and then come down to that, to that new lift station location. So that would kind of reroute that trunk main through those, through those areas and get it to the, to the new lift station. So that, of course, for this component to work out, of course, the lift station has to be done, which I don't think that's, that's that component like we talked is kind of kind of solid, solidified that that component will be included. So um uh, I guess that that's all I think I have on that. So then moving to option two B. That would essentially we would look at potentially lining the portions of clay tile, 18 inch mains there instead of realigning and and replace, replacing the mains. I guess the caveat on that is especially the the portion underneath the homes, really, we really wouldn't recommend doing that. Of course, if that's the desire of the city to to leave that that main in service, we will, but I guess we wouldn't necessarily advise to invest in that, that component of infrastructure, knowing that it's underneath homes and not really a great situation to to leave that in service. And then, of course, for manhole three to two on that map, the segment coinciding there would also be that that component would actually be replaced. That stretch of main instead of lining it. Brad, is it that that section that was in really poor shape? Is that correct?
Yeah, that that's the segment. They would not clean and televise back in 2016 because they were afraid of the poor condition of the pipe and they might have a collapse if they, you know, tried to do that work. So that this option to be includes both of these components. And then the estimated $180,000 would be for both of those two components there.
That's number four and two.
Yeah, so four, four to, four to three would be reline and then three to two would be replaced. Because that three to, between manholes three and two, they weren't able to televise back in 2016. So that kind of is a good indicator that it's not a candidate for for relining. So.
That's 180 for all.
Correct, yeah. So, so I think, I think kind of between two A and two B, that's kind of the big, you know, between, you know, big, I guess, decision kind of based upon the locations that we're looking at, you know, with which route the the city wants to go, I don't know.
Street, you bad anyway. Can I add something here? So Scott said he was all right in four wheeler. And I think right south of two, he said it started to look like self cable.
Just south of manhole, so just north of the pasta plant.
That's on the north side of pasta. I'm not exactly sure he just said it.
Okay.
And just sort of wash out there to their descent and sink.
Okay.
Well, that, so that first one, now on two A, that includes the pavement work and everything over top of the street, right?
Yes, yep, that's correct.
So I mean, that'd be all the new street then.
Yeah, putting, putting the concrete back where it is today. Yep.
In that dip. Putting the concrete in that dip and then the new pavement on the street, is that the?
Yep, yep, exactly. Basically, just replacing the street, what's there today. Just put that back the same way.
And you have the whole width.
Whole width of the street or are you just doing?
Yep. Yep, full width.
Full width, okay. That street's bad anyway. That is. Yeah. Yeah, instead of relining and then.
Right.
Oh, right. Yeah, so I mean, the streets we haven't started with. Okay, well, go on.
Okay, so then option, option three is a replacement of the lagoon inlet piping into the primary cells. Basically, I think it's something that may be kind of tied to, once we get further into the design, it could almost be just required with that force main upgrade. But that that would be kind of the scope of work there to to get those new lines into the, into the primary cells replaced.
But if you're running a, like a 10 or 12 inch down, you can't reduce that to six, I mean. No, that's the whole under here.
Yeah, that that's what we'll confirm once we start getting into our preliminary design.
Yeah, once we, once we get the force main sized and and all that, we'll know for sure if it's
even an option.
Probably pretty likely that something that component would have to be included. So that that component is estimated at 230 something. Not much else to add there. Any questions? On that part. Moving to option four, that would be addressing the sewer main underneath the railroad tracks. Of course, that's, that's what serves everything on the east side of the railroad. So it's a pretty, pretty critical component. And of course, getting, getting that, that portion lined would would alleviate, you know, if that pipe were to continue to degrade the need to bore it, which of course is exponentially more expensive. So that would be a suggested part, part to include in that, that's estimated at 54,000 to line that that portion of the sewer. So. Okay. Option five then would be replacing the sewer in Second Street and the alley north of the school. And these areas were poor, definitely poor condition during the televising. The estimated construction cost on that component is 650,000. As far as street improvements on this, Brad, what I assume we're assuming full, full width here too?
Yeah, so you know, one thing from that manhole 44 to 43, I think that's newer asphalt there. And so, you know, I I did go back and review that televising and and a possibility of just relining that sewer. So you don't have to dig up that new asphalt. That that's an option. Otherwise, in the estimates, I do have full width street replacement. You wouldn't necessarily need to do that, but the streets are in pretty poor shape there. And I think I did include, you know, replacing the laterals out to the property line. So that's, that's all in there.
Okay. The, so that that could stretch between 43 and 44, did you include, did you, is your estimate based upon replacing that or or relining it?
No, that's a good question. I would have to double check if that. I I want to say I did not include that asphalt because, you know, I I planned on relining that segment because number one, it it looked like it could be. And then number two, to to not dig up that newer asphalt.
Yeah. Okay. Any questions on on that? Area at all? Okay. So then, option six. Last, kind of the last component is replacing the sewer just east of the railroad crossing there from manhole 94 to 95.
To me.
So that that portion's estimated at 145,000.
Yeah, one thing I'll bring up, and I, we've updated our, the city map, the web map. But so from 95, it it actually goes straight west, the sewer main and tees into that north-south main on Seventh Avenue. So it's, we're not showing it correctly on this figure here, but it's actually an inline T from 95 to the west.
Okay. Okay. So I guess the next page kind of lays out a couple scenarios. Kind of have the the budgeted costs up top there. And we know two different scenarios for for possible project scope. So first one would be option, including option one, two A, option three, option four and option five. Total estimated construction on that is 3.174,000, so about 50,000 over and that that initial construction budget. I would note though that we do, since we're pretty early on, we are estimating 15% in contingencies, just because there's, so still a lot of things to sort out. So that norm, normally we have set it at 10%. So we have a little, little cushion there that, that if, you know, if that number was, ends up being, you know, kind of closer to the the estimate, there is some additional budget, budget included there to to alleviate that.
Say, Josh.
Yep.
So it's these, these numbers here, when I did the estimates, I did not include contingencies with these figures. So this is, this is purely construction. I I kept the contingencies kind of out of it.
Yeah.
Yep, so.
Yeah, but that's probably out 15%.
Yeah, right. For the, for the project contingency, you're correct. But
Yeah.
as far as the figures for each option, just so you guys understand that is just construction and there's no contingencies in those numbers.
Yeah. So then, I guess the third scenario, scenario two would be actually including option one, option two B. So the opposite, the second option for that that area by the path north of the pasta plant. Which would be the relining and replacing that one, one stretch of sewer. Option three, option four, option five, and then also including option six, which isn't included in option one or scenario one, excuse me. So that that estimate is construction is estimated at $2,619,000. So that's about a little over half a million dollars under the construction, for construction budget. So smaller, kind of a smaller scope, smaller, quite a bit smaller cost there. So that with that, you know, there would be a potential to look at some other other things to include potentially if the city were to decide to go, go that route.
You have a price of what it was from 51 to 49 on over by second avenue. And the alleyway mark is still.
Um, I mean, that's, you know, you, it'll be roughly, maybe not quite half of that 650, you know, it's, you're digging four blocks there, replacing the pavement. Also, the other component is just that relining from 44 to 43. So I would say ballpark, it's you know, 300, you know, 325 somewhere in there for those two blocks.
Alleyway, no. I don't buy that in a way, no how. No, it can happen that way. You got all the asphalt before you, I know, all I'm asking is that alleyway north of the school from 51 to 49.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, and I, we don't have, we we can get you those numbers.
Thoughts on that, so.
Yeah, we, we can get you those numbers. We, we didn't break that, those two components out, but it, you're right, it's maybe, maybe it's 250, somewhere in there.
I don't buy that either. I'm saying you probably want to be more than 50, 100,000.
How many feet of pipe is that, Brad? Two, two blocks, so.
Yeah, the blocks are about 360, I think, from manhole to manhole.
720 feet of pipe and probably 75, 80 bucks a foot.
Yep.
Looking at scenario number one, if you took that out, possibly, that would probably put us on budget.
I'd say it's 70, 75, 80,000 probably.
Yeah.
I mean, you got, you got services in there, you're working in the alley, you know, travel.
Being tighter, there may be a little higher price with.
Maybe it's 100, I guess, closer to 100 for those two blocks. Includes the new, new manholes, so, yeah.
Yep. Yeah, you're, you're talking 100,000 bucks probably.
So that would make scenario number one back in.
Yeah, yeah, if we pulled that, pulled that component out.
Scott, you haven't jet that thing anymore?
Not even just been a little bit. Scoop. Down on the corner there.
Yeah.
That's gotta be redone right then and there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So yeah, that could, maybe that's, maybe we tentatively don't include that, but as we get a little closer, we could look at, look at including it or or bid it as an alternate. Yeah, yeah, it'd be an, definitely would be an option, let's see.
That's why I thought, yeah, you just hold it back there.
Mm-hmm.
Way out or way under.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah, definitely would be an option to bid that as an alternate to see what the, what the bids actually.
That's something the city might be able to handle on their own at some point.
Mm-hmm, yeah. Yeah. Okay. So yeah, I guess I don't, I don't know if you, you guys want to kind of make a, make a decision on that, or if you want to think on it a little more. Just open to, open any suggestions there, or I guess, you guys think you have a good enough understanding of it tonight, we could solidify the the scope there and get, get things started with Army Corps on, on the scope of the projects.
So on the next page, I'm interested. Increase in rate to cover that. Up to money.
Yeah. Yeah, so SRF loan of just under 1.1 million, 30 year, 30 year loan. Their interest rate is 2%. So that puts you at just under $49,000 yearly payment. And the 110% coverage, the SRF just requires that you have a little, little buffer there to to account for any, any mishaps that may happen. So see, you're looking at 50, 54,000, just under 54,000 for an annual payment, so. Based on 565 sewer accounts, you end up just under 6 for your increase.
Basically a $3.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, that count is on the next. Done by this time next year. Scenario two, you're kind of putting a band in.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. You spoke, Todd, which one of you think is happening first? Under the house, moving out, Brad, because that street the higher dollar one.
Yeah, I love that, I guess.
Rudy. I'm coming for the relining under the hall.
Roger. I think we should move it to, yeah. And then if the danger is trying to rely on any of those houses, so. Except for you.
Been there forever, no, they heard nothing. Been there forever now, they heard nothing to rely on. Move the difference in price tool.
One eighty to eighty.
Yeah.
Only thing is, a street is so bad and easy, mixing two, you know.
The guy had that all figured out to fix that, so. He was gonna chrome it, you know, going middle. The favorite. You know, I just had a big deal to fix that.
Then why did it sink?
Hmm.
Why did it sink?
Well, no, I'm just, I'm just saying.
Yeah, he can face it.
But it wasn't that expensive, you know.
Well, why, why is it sinking now? It's been sinking over the years, why? You know, people going down was in trouble, you know, every year it needs, it needs to sink some more, so I don't want to.
So it's kind of continuously been. Going down and down.
It's been like that forever. I mean, ever since I was on the dip was there, you know, I've remembered going with the blade. You wouldn't get all the snow off because the dip looks six inches.
You did that re line, would you re line that little bit south from? When you just re line wrong. That little stretch from.
With the camera. Did that get televised to underneath the hall and how that how that sewer looked? I don't even know, I never seen it.
Yeah, that that was televised, um. You know, it looked okay, uh, there's cracking, you know, similar to a lot of the other mains, uh, but nothing that. You know, would would say that it couldn't be relined, uh, no concerns, you know, at that time, so. I think there's five, five or six laterals that are coming into that one.
But you're 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 still, no, you was right, if you go that route, you're gonna leave everything under the pasta plant though too, right? We wouldn't, we wouldn't be going to the tracks and.
Or what would? Boy, you still can go to the tracks.
What would use? We don't have that included in the set estimate. We're basically, we rely that. They're gonna go use the existing one.
The re line was all the way then.
Yeah. No, that's why I know, there's still part of that's gotta be dug up. Come on, just north of the pasta plant, that's bad. Yeah, that's that's a good, yeah.
Yeah.
Unless you fill it out in a scenario and. Rewind that bit, go this way down.
Yeah, yeah, that would be, if if that's, if you guys do decide you wanna line that portion, yeah, that would certainly be a. Be an option to. Um, go from that manhole three to the east.
Put that, you're gonna cut that one off, so.
Really? Not a huge amount.
Well, I saw the street.
Um, is with re lining, who's gonna do the re lining of the foundations that we had with the town that we had? If it's the same company, they'll be back on the deck.
Yeah, you don't know.
That's the only turn I have, is, oh.
Yeah. Rewinding experience wasn't real great.
Well, anybody wanna make a decision, or do we wanna? Think on it.
We're August is three one days.
September sixth will be the next.
Sit on for me. Roger, all right.
Yeah, that's fine. Okay.
For now. What else? Anybody got any questions for you guys? But we, Brad, did we get a cost estimate if we re lined under those houses and then? And then right south of went over the tracks and?
Yeah, so so you're talking just re line that one portion that kind of. Rerouting around the possible. Yeah, yeah, we can uh take a look at that. See what, Brad, are you still there?
Yeah, yep, I'm still here.
Okay.
Did you hear what I asked, Brad?
Yeah, right, so I I did get the, I did break out the re lining from four to three. Uh, that was seventy thousand to do that stretch of re lining.
Seventy, seventy to re line it.
Yeah, correct, so re line from four to three would be seventy. And then, uh, you know, we can revise that option to. To then add, you know, just do the the re lining four to three, and then. From there go east, uh, and then south to the station.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, let's work that one up, you know, I you don't, we just talk to you next meeting and head time.
Yeah, we we can get that to you guys, uh. You know, as soon as we can, and then have that, you you can chew on it then, and and, you know, with the goal of. Having a decision um at your September meeting. Trying to to lock everything down.
Yeah. Running that way, you don't. Don't have to run to the meetings or anything, so.
Okay.
Because I know whatever that you call it, your costs.
Okay, well, yeah, we'll uh, we'll look at uh what what kind of costs. Um, difference that makes and do kind of another almost a two C. Oh, yeah, yeah, it'd be definitely some fair, fair cost savings, or. You know, options. That's another thing you gotta look at too, is.
That was only, what, fifty thousand? Something like that. You have a good idea. It's gonna be the width of the machine, but he's gonna keep, he'll go once and then crown it. Boy, you dig in, you dig in, just uh, just down the middle. It'll get redone and then, you know, get packed. Because he he wants to see what's going on there.
But I know it gets deeper every year, so it's something same.
Yeah, you know, like there's. There's no sewer there, and I don't think the water is right down the center, I wouldn't think.
I don't know.
You know.
Makes you wonder.
No, there's not, not, not there, no.
What do you mean? Everybody's, everybody's speaking, isn't that sewer that hits with that man? Hence in the north.
Yeah, I did probably. Service line, yeah, I forgot about.
That's why I'm wondering if the crack or something's out of place and we're getting a wash.
Yeah, who knows?
And it might be even one of the houses, the service line speeding might get in the wash.
But that was televised too. From four. Now, I don't know.
Brad, do you know if that, because I think that's PVC, um, that portion that's in the street.
Really?
Yeah, that should be newer.
Uh, so in the street, south of, so four to four A.
Yeah. I believe that.
Yeah, I.
You see.
I'd have to double check, I can check here. That was cameraed, but I do believe that's PVC, but let me check here, we have that.
Yeah, we can take a look and see if uh. That was, I'm guessing it probably wasn't. Um, just because it is PVC, but. See if there's anything there.
Well, they love that, they know it's PVC, they didn't care.
No, okay.
Yeah, because that's what happened when that one collapsed, they thought it was all new out there, you know, wanted to. Had to re line that one, the cement, you know, when we got the town, we didn't know. New line, it's a big problem. What's the law on banning lines?
You don't have to, um. You know, depending where they're at, um, you may wanna fill them, you know, if they're under a road or. Under a house. Yeah, you'd wanna put some, pump some, do it essentially.
That's gonna, that's gonna have costs and too.
Global fill, and that that's included.
Yeah, that's all good. When, I told you we have, if you ban the sewer line, under anything, you got it back.
Yeah, I mean, if it's under green space, you.
Yeah, I mean, like, like, what's off the field, you don't have to, but I think anything under the buildings, like, I thought that's a lot.
Oh, yeah.
What do you use on that?
To abandon it, it's a like a flowable fill, um, kind of like a grow slurry mixture. Space filled up so that it's solid there. Won't collapse, so. Yeah. Okay.
Anybody else have any questions?
Great, alrighty, well, anything else comes up, guys, just let us know and we'll. Talk to you guys in a few weeks, so. Alrighty, thank you very much. Good evening.
Thanks, Josh.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Brad, I'll email our agreement tomorrow.
Okay, sounds good.
We're not gonna sign it though, because if we sign it, we probably got paid for it.
At some point, on- once you guys' agreement with the core is in place, then we can start submitting invoices.
Yeah, okay.
All right, thanks.
Very good, thank you. Anybody else have any ideas? Might we can move on and void reviews? I believe we're gonna do Kathy's tomorrow. No complaints? We'll be happy. We, at what point do we consider we're gonna hire him full time? Pretty quick, but I need to.
I guess heading that around, getting more to see.
Feel good.
Much come up, sit stop, I'm gonna hear you better.
Listens well, wants to learn. Does a great job.
Has he done weekend rotations yet?
Yeah, yeah.
Basically, he's on call.
Yeah.
Is there enough work to keep some people back, another person?
There we are, yeah, yeah.
I know we gotta get that plan cleaned up, I know that that was supposed to be done last winter, or was that?
Yeah.
Or started, I mean.
There's probably only a foot left to clean in there.
Okay, so then don't think sides are clean?
Well, both sides will be cleaned, but then we gotta pump it out to the pit.
Still have got the motor or pump fixed.
No, we got it fixed.
Got it, I don't know.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
I think there's some maintenance stuff too, I mean, there's some insulation.
Get that whole.
No, um, I just talked to Senex today about getting their black dirt and hauling it over.
Yeah, get the Gary coming talk to me again.
Yeah.
Were you taking that back there by Senex then?
Just a little bit uh to fill in. Just south of Jenny Tins approach there.
Some real deep hole or.
Where culverts collide. Yeah, or you saw me cutting that stuff out of the alley.
As long as we got you, what what else you got going on?
Um, while we're painting curbs, trying to get that done for what school starting here, um, then we'll jump back on to trees.
Tell them about that.
All.
Sink over by north of the little one.
The other night I brought my kids for a four wheeler ride in just north of the pasta plant. Right where the sewer goes under from the manhole, you can see it collapse there, um.
Collapsing round the manhole, you mean?
No, underneath the building.
That's a great.
That's what I'm wondering, before the mist. Yeah, that ain't pretty. That's how it sounds like when they pull the pipes and they. That'd be another restart. Get the new one off, move the way underneath that.
You, that or Winston's impacted one or the other.
Yeah, we got to put a fall before this, geez, I was. Six or seven years ago. Or that was more than eight years ago, wasn't it? Six or eight years.
Six to eight.
I mean, it wasn't packed, and that would have fallen in before this, that's something leaking by there.
Oh, we have to be dug up right there.
Yeah, that's the good. Then uh, the twenty-third and twenty-four, real water's coming back up to finish smoking the town.
Make sure you have your notebook, make sure you write down these spots.
Yeah, I got a math, I job.
Okay, good, good, good.
Keep spraying what we see too. It seems like it never ending thing.
Oh, yeah, that they go on you.
Um, then eventually you start getting ready for winter. And then, uh, what's his name, Houst Cooper is gonna look at, definitely gonna look at payloader instead, maybe missing.
Yes. It's just easy. When we got to here, Scott. We do have a resident concern here again about trees. Uh, Cindy over, what's going on there, you know?
Um. I don't really know what's going on there, um, I did go talk to Bruce that day, he told me to.
Yeah, that was a different place.
Yeah, um, so it was no. Yeah, um, so it was no, he was notified not to cut people's trees other than what was by the sidewalk. Um, told him, he seems to understand now, um, so. Hope it doesn't happen again.
When, when does one from Cindy come in though? And this is what the other call was, that was a little over, we go, he, there was another guy in town, he did this, when he walked in. Whack way up. In the yard. And then I guess like Sandy, the problem is she apparently hired someone to trim it, so that little man, yeah, exposed. So I don't know, you, you think he's quit now or?
Yeah, I mean, and then when, when we do start now, it'll be me, Mike cutting and him just feeding the trigger, so. It'll be alright.
So when you come by my place, you were cutting?
Yeah, I mean, it's feeding.
This, where, did you cut in front of Cindy's or was it?
No, I didn't. No, we just started.
No, it's berm only and that's leaving. If, if there's one hanging over, we'll send a letter, just, just write it down and we'll send a letter to the, to the owner.
Talked to Bruce about that, I, cause he said he had attempted to. He said that he had attempted to talk to the owner about, about some of this, and I said, we, our office has ways, you know, we have cell numbers and we can get a message probably better than you just knocking on doors, so I said, in the future, if you have things like this, give us a heads up and we would attempt to contact them.
Never had one come on and say to cut their tree.
I don't know if that's how it works or not.
I've never heard such a thing, I can't imagine whoever's trimming her trees are disinfecting or using a different song. No, I, that, that's just, I haven't heard such a thing.
Yeah, it's just the cleanliness of the bathrooms out there, um, I talked to the guys today, since they're both there today. Just told them to take some, both of checking the bathrooms, just to make sure it gets done. Uh, they kinda play the, well, I thought he did it game.
I believe, I believe we just assigned one of the guys, one week.
That's the way it is, but. Thought he was gonna. I'm just gonna give it to Mike to do, since Bruce checks the sewers in the morning and the stations and stuff, Mike can go up there while he's waiting to mow grass.
Well, while we're on this, on that page, let's just finish it up.
I didn't know if she needed permission to put up the sign, she called and asked if she could put up the sign.
She have the signs or?
She was going to get one, if. Yeah, and I, I just told her, I said, I don't know of any rules that you can't put up a sign, but I said, I'll bring it up and ask, um. If we. That's what I told her, I said, um. She said what ends up happening is if there's anything happening at like the armory. There was like that large rummage sale or something, um, and she said, a lot of her clients are elderly and it. Car seat, uh, wick type things with car seats, and so she wants to, uh, claim one side of the street over there.
Uh, I got, uh. No parking between signs that show arrows.
She didn't specify, I think that's worth a conversation, you know, what you guys want to allow, um.
That's such a bad area.
There's nowhere else to park for them.
No, and then not, when they park on both sides there, it's not, it's ridiculous thing. We should be just parking on one side. People can't get through there, even if you burn.
Yeah, I would think if they go one just beyond their walk-in and then back to the alley. Or the method church or that.
If they had, I mean, I'm like making this up, like logically, what would you have for customers at one time, maybe? Three, you know, three, four cars would probably be enough.
I think three should be. They went, yeah, maybe go just a little bit east of where the driveway is and then they go back to the alley. Going to the west or that, to give them at least three cars, like they would get, I think that would. I think three cars would be plenty.
Car lengths.
I mean, to save room for customers.
That's, yeah, well, they're in the hardest part is getting parking due to all the workers right there.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, but I mean, that's.
They get their own sign, is there a restriction on where they put that sign or how do they?
Should talk to the N D S, N D S U extension office too, since they park right there too.
Maybe, public health has their entrance there, where N D S U extension has the front. So.
But I think they all park on the side.
They, they might all park on the side, but.
They need to talk to them about that.
Public health customers though would go to that side entrance, not the front.
I would tell them if they get the signs, the guys can put them in.
Okay.
Push them into the box.
She had also, I forgot about this part, she had thought maybe even something on wheels that they could take in and out when they're open. I don't know if that's an alternative.
That might be a better thing because then, you know.
You know, then they can pull that, um.
Yeah, I guess they wanna do that, that's one.
I'll see what they want to do, they have those two options. Okay.
I think only for public health customers from eight to five.
Where their hours are, sure, okay. Speaking of signs, uh, the next one, there's also been some. Issues with the trash services at Arrow Court, I was not under the right understanding. I thought that was their trash can, it's in our city contract, so instead of us giving all of the residents at Arrow Court a bin, they just get a common dumpster. But there's no sign or anything marking that it's just for Arrow Court residents, they don't have an, a different place to dump their trash, so Kevin thought that he would maybe look for a sign to put up to kinda alleviate people just driving up and dumping stuff. Mm-hmm, so, uh, we found a couple.
Well, there's a dumpster there, let's go through it, and they have like seven dumpsters and they're all in full, so you know it's.
There are some large windows and some different things that were dumped in and we're not sure where they came from, but. So we thought that we would, um, try a sign, and if there's continual issues, we might have to talk about each resident getting their own trash can and having to put it out. But, uh, Kevin thought, let's try a sign first.
There's only like four or five residents over there, no?
More than that. There's gotta be at least seven, eight. Um, we bill it on their, uh, water bill, um, it just as residential.
Do they have individual water meters?
Would it be better to just do individuals?
But you're gonna be running up and down that street.
They would almost have to put their garbage kinda like what Jeremy does is out on the main road.
Oh, yeah, well, you need the X. Have problems moving in, taking a garbage can across the street to the right side.
Cause all the apartment buildings over there have a dumpster also.
I haven't heard that, um, doesn't mean it doesn't happen, I just haven't heard it.
I know, it's just people just doing, come here and just, you know, when they come in from the country, that's when it kinda takes you off. It's the person that dump, dump, and they're paying for it. Well, you try that. Now, I don't remember when you see the big article in the paper. A man was gonna work and get that.
We have requested a sit-down meeting with the editor and the owner, I don't know if we're gonna get one, cause we can't even get them to call us back. Um, but we've requested a sit-down, and what we would like to pose is that we would co-write a summary of the meeting. Um, it's circulating over there, uh, complete misrepresentation of the last meeting in the printed newspaper. And, uh. I noticed it right away on Monday morning and, um, fire guys were not happy, it doesn't look well for anybody, it just, it is not accurate of what happened here.
Well, some didn't know about it until we have fire brought up then.
So, we're working on attempting to figure, yeah, something out on there. Um, but moving forward, that's what we would pose is if someone wants to write, and it's free speech, we can't really say you can't write. But to get your facts right and get all the knowledge in there, we'd like to co-write it. Think it's just a lack of knowledge on, on the background. It was the reporter. I wrote up kind of a thing to go talk to them about, uh. It's a lengthy explanation of all of that, I don't know that we can print all of that, but if we just say maybe that it's not factual and, uh, the recording is available online, I, I don't really know how to even retract that cause almost nothing in there is accurate, um, unfortunately. But we're working on that, um, the writer, I think she has a lot of passion, she just maybe didn't know the background behind a lot of that. So if you just log in and just watch one piece of that, it's easy to get mixed up, I guess, but. So we're working on it. It's not the first time that we've had some articles that were, maybe had some facts wrong, and so that's kinda what we would pose is to have us included, or at least if you're going to submit an article, run it by us first.
I thought you just submitted in the minutes that he gave her.
No, I submit the minutes, um, she writes her own story.
Well. What's this about?
I wouldn't necessarily say it's problems, um, a lot of parks have the pest, um, waste removal systems and you don't have piles, and it's kind of like a, a reminder, like, hey, just because it's in the country doesn't mean you shouldn't clean up after your dog kinda thing.
And mics ran over Bates full of crap, and it exploded on them.
So, it's a relatively cheap thing to try, I don't know what you guys think on that. I'm not sure that.
I know a lot of people walk, to just walk out that way, back and forth, you know?
Happens over by the cemetery too. So at the campground, our guys check it, you know, park maybe. What's your guys' thought? Put it on pause or order it?
Are we gonna even do it?
Will get used.
That's gonna be my guess, they can do it anyway, if they got a little outdoor room there to run, they're just gonna let the dog go and they're not gonna take them. I, I don't think it would work myself.
My wife takes those plastic bags.
Again, a few do it, but most you watch.
I do, I do do that, but I have some in the dumpster, and I'm walking by a dumpster and I'm not gonna carry it back home.
So these ones that he's hitting and exploding, I mean, they're just throwing out. They just, they pick them up, and if you go to that work, why would you? Yeah, leave it, this way, yeah, it's all left it underground, but the base.
Set it along the tree lines there.
Is that what he's doing?
Yeah. Goes by and hits it, shoots it back at them from the trees.
Don't make sure you're wearing a safety goggles. A two S's.
Oh, okay, so. Couple months ago, I reached out to A two S, asking for an estimate of a structural assessment of our grandstands. What's wrong with our grandstands and why were they condemned? Instead of giving me an estimate, he calls me the next day and says I'm ten minutes away. So he came and did the structural assessment without approval. Uh, once I got the bill, I called A E two S and I said, here's the deal, A, I called and asked for an estimate of what an assessment would cost, he did the work, can we, do we have room in this invoice? Like, can I not pay drive time, can I not pay mileage since I didn't have a heads up and I didn't get approval? So he said, um, he would be okay with us not paying for drive time and not paying for mileage. So that's what you see on there, um, I did put it in writing what I wanted, but when he got here and he called and said I'm ten minutes away, I should have said bummer deal, sorry, turn around. But I didn't do that, um, he was already here, in fact, he had a tire go out, so I sent him over to Roger. And, uh. And uh. Yep, that's where he was coming. He was coming to our place. Um.
Hey, let's kill two birds.
Kill two birds with one stone.
I didn't charge him that much, so I should have.
What we did gain from that, I don't know if you see that on the back, the email, is what is actually wrong with our grandstands. Mm-hmm. Obviously, there's no cost assessments on there, but um. We did gain that. So I feel like I have to ask for forgiveness yet again. Um, my intention was to not have the work done unauthorized. I was. Simply asking how much would it cost if we had you come look um. Well, that's when we were talking about the grandstands. Right, but.
Why did you even ask somebody to do this?
Because when we were looking around in the records to find out why they were condemned, nobody had an answer.
We, we, it doesn't matter. We didn't, weren't never gonna fix it, so you should never want to ask for anything like this. Especially an engineer, because anything you do with an engineer is gonna cost you a buck.
And and I will, I will take that. I don't feel like it should cost anything to say, not how much will it cost to fix it? How much does an assessment cost? That's no different than calling the carpenter to say, how much do your estimates cost? You don't, you typically don't. It doesn't cost you anything to get to get that.
So you're technically asking just what an assessment.
Yes, and I understand that part.
You should have said, will it cost me anything if I ha- have you do this?
That's what I did. I did ask that.
What he said?
In my email, I asked for that. I said, what? That's what I inquired was. What is a guesstimate for a structural assessment? So then he wrote back and he said, I'll send you a scope and a fee proposal later. He never did. He called me and said I'm ten minutes away. So what I should have done at that point is saying, no, you know, but he did the work. He was here. I I don't know. And so. We did gain information that nobody seemed to have had. I know that we would never fix it, but. The the conversation was, why were they even condemned? Nobody even knew. So what I gained from that was, well, it's simple structural things. We would never fix it, but it wasn't because it was so out of line that they had to demo it. I mean. Pretty, pretty small stuff, but.
What price are they trying to?
Nine hundred and eighteen dollars is what um, just the work cost. Without his drive time and without his mileage. So he was here for um, an hour and forty-five minutes. And then his email to write it up and his review of the laws of why that would be was two hours and fifteen minutes. And then their office work was uh fifteen minutes. So that's what you see on the invoice, the nine hundred and eighteen dollars. And when I called and I talked to Jason White Sox, I said, here's the D deal, Jason. I said Jay came up and he did the work and that's, that's great, but I was not a, that's not what I asked for. I didn't ask him to do the work. I asked him to give me a price quote of what that cost. And he said, you're right, Jay should have given you the scope and the fee proposal like he said he was going to, and he didn't do that. And so he said, well, you know. We will just pay what you think the services, you know, that you got. So I said, well, I would pose to only pay for the work, not the drive time, because he was in Grafton. And then he drove from Grafton to Cano. But on the phone, he said, well, I'm driving right by. I I don't know. So this is, this is my. This is kind of my, kind of my fault, kinda not my fault. It's not what I asked it for. But.
You're requesting an assessment. Not a, the job to be done.
Yeah.
He jumped the gun and didn't charge.
Yeah. And then he wrote me an email after the fact with the summary, you know. Well, what am I gonna do with that? Like.
So what would the actual proposal would have cost?
What, what you have in the email is what, that's what I have. Their bill is the, the, yeah, the thirteen hundred. Like it was literally, I'm, I'm gonna be here in ten minutes.
Do that. Listage for this project.
So, and I, when I visited with Jason, I said, Jason. My understanding, this isn't really how this works. And he said, it isn't usually.
But he, he told you to pay what you think it's worth?
He said, let's, you know, he said, just write what you think and we'll, we'll figure it out and.
Honest to God, I mean, I, I do free estimates, but. I don't do the work until I'm given. So, I mean. Until you decided to do something else, then, you know, but I give them an estimate for free, but. Some people charge for estimates.
Yeah.
But it's, it shouldn't be no thirteen hundred dollars.
Because the thirteen hundred isn't the estimate.
Leave the fence up for safety or?
The fence down because they needed to get in there and go home.
We're gonna put it back up or? I thought that's what that was for. You know, say if a kid.
People busted through it already, that's why. People busted through it already. Well, actually, the event people busted through to put their little motorcycle thing up there.
You have to pay ten percent of that.
Oh, like, so you said you're gonna pay for it all then?
Oh, but everything that A two S is gonna, you know. Oh, so.
You want ninety-eighteen?
Well, I, I took that off. That's what I proposed. Yeah, thirteen is there, is there invoice. And when I called Jason, I said I would propose to not pay drive time and not pay mileage.
I'll go, I'll call him.
I, I couldn't. That's not what I asked for, you know. See your fund balances there? We have a couple of things in here that aren't. They're not fully reflective yet because we'll amend the budget at the end of the year. But we've allocated some money for ARPA already, or out of ARPA already. There's a few things. That will get divvied up a little bit differently at the end of the year. No, job development is uh economic development. My training is in uh general fund. I thought that I would go over with Scott soon here, what his department. If there's anything else that they need in this year's budget. Purchases and such.
Then. That will be Brad's you on this year.
Javon and note two, we're working with FEMA um. We have approximately twenty-two thousand dollars from our spring disaster that we're. Asking for some FEMA help with. If we were to get it granted. We would get um eighty-five percent of that reimbursed. Um, they're analyzing the. What are those called? The rails? There was a upgrade to the rails and so they're analyzing that. They're not sure that they will cover that. And that part was about eleven grand.
It was not an upgrade.
It's not an upgrade. It's what the invoice says though, which is. Kind of why they flagged it. Uh, I'll know more in another probably week and a half. If we do not get FEMA, we could essentially uh take money out of that emergency fund for that. Or we could leave it in the sewer fund. That would be up to you guys, what you wanted to do. With that twenty-two thousand dollars.
Committee, Roger, open me and anybody saying anything.
That's it?
Oh.
I just have a. Fire hall. Um, the garage door that the ambulance hit. Ambulance hit a, the garage door.
Oh, why didn't, I heard that.
Just bringing it up. So there's a bottom panel on the door that's bent. I don't know who, who's responsible is that. And I know it's a city-owned building, so.
Depending on what it's gonna cost, they have a hundred dollars.
Well, I mean, that should be their, their baby effects, not us.
Right. I, I just wanna bring it up. I don't know. Um, I just know that panel got hit and they'd like to see it. I, I just found all roads and just wanna make sure it is fixed, I guess.
Yeah.
I can reach out to the ambulance too, to see if they're.
This is all I heard, that ambulance backed into it. And, and then the uh, there, we are having problems with the, the exhaust fan up top of the roof. It's. Could be possible uh me going in there is just the surround and the motor is.
You know, running or?
It's, it's, we, or it's not sucking out the roof, so I just, if, if there's any way of grabbing someone, take a look at that. I don't know if that's weight or is it?
Yeah, or you've got a lorry it up there. I mean, or anything plugged it on top, but they ain't open.
It's just a motor, it's just. The shroud itself is just from years, so.
What do you think? Should we replace all of it?
I would.
Has a fire department been up there and looked at it?
Yeah.
Uh, Preston, Paulerson, little building maintenance guy.
You guys are all different than what I used to be. A fireman did everything there. Painted, carpenter work, roof work, you name it. You know, I just, I guess the.
But nowadays it's a commercial building. And if you have something without a license, then who's liable?
I guess it's just, it's change of time.
And then that back uh. Honing that's on the back is. There's some rotting going on.
Got to run into the garbage truck. Not watching. Yeah.
Not much, just say a few people complaining about the weeds and gutters.
The what?
Weeds in the gutters, but yeah.
Well, you got them all sprayed now, I'm sure, not.
Pretty much.
I guess I didn't say.
There probably a few new ones coming up.
That, that guy right next to Randy Thompson, drives me nuts every time I come in, I come home twice a week. He's blowing his grass out in the, on Highway two eighty-one.
There's a lot of people.
Yeah, a lot of them do that, yeah.
It's like he does it on purpose. You know, and there's, then there's that uh storm drain right down by his place too. That thing was almost covered.
Yeah, Scott had to clear all that one two eighty-one.
I know, they do. There are a lot of people do it. They can't see more.
They don't care.
On that stage, if he goes too far, white kids, it's too, you know, slippery and.
I did that one thing with, uh, are we gonna do anything about the stuff, the public service on the water? You guys know what I'm talking about, that, you know?
What?
Well, you know, with people that have been stealing water. You know, and I mean, I'm not accusing of until it's investigated. It should be investigated. We've been down there. And uh, anytime somebody takes the curb box and. Either takes it off and moves it to a different area. That's not right. Am I supposed to touch that curb box? And it's gone. And I just feel it got moved to a different area. What happened when he, when he changed door. See, he's got a sewer dump. He's not paying for that. He's got a hydrant. You know what a hydrant is? Well, and that's getting used for ten, twelve years now. And he, and he only uses a thousand gallons a month. So I think somebody better do something about it. We nailed some guys. And Terry and I caught him. I mean, they were nailed. They appeared fine. He just gotta be sent the letter to either come here to the council meeting or gotta go down to his house. And take care of it. You know, it's just something that should be taken care of. I mean. When they do stuff for us, they charge. Then why get tree water?
Yeah, no, I agree.
You know? It doesn't make sense.
Maybe help a man to draft a letter. Well, how, how would you word it?
Yeah, we, we could uh come up with something, you know?
Maybe that'd be the best way to.
Are you looking at like? Compensation for the past or for it just?
That's what you gotta discuss. And I know the, the one guy that we caught. We kinda. Kinda did an estimate of what he used after things were taken care of, what he was using a month. And then how many years, how many years did he?
And you're sure that hydrant works and everything? Pardon? You sure that hydrant's working?
A lot of hoses hanging out there.
But it's not going through a meter.
For all you guys that don't know who we're talking about, this, this is in the council. Now you don't go.
We're on a public meeting and we're being recorded.
Well, this is going all to the people.
This is on the internet.
Okay, well then we just, sorry about that. We didn't mention any names.
So, yeah.
But anyway.
But I mean, you know, you, you know, the meter's not meter or the hydrant isn't meter, you know that for the fact.
Right, right, yeah. Yeah, Amanda said that he got one meter. Or one building.
Why don't you just help a man write a letter that kind of where, how you wanna word it?
But I don't know if you, you know, you want, should he come to the council meeting or?
Well, if he wants to protest, I guess he should.
And do you guys want us to retro bill or just fix it moving forward? What would you prefer?
We gotta see, we gotta find out.
Kind of see what he's using first, I suppose. Probably won't use nothing on it though if he owns that. Yeah, something should change.
I mean, I kinda wanted just to go down and talk to him. I mean, I kinda wanted, just to go down and talk to him.
You know, well, let's do that first, maybe.
Yeah, but I mean, it should be two, three council members would own there, you know, to take care of it. Cuz we went down and looked and looked and looked and uh, no water shut off. So, I don't, it's up you guys, it's, it's up the public service. If you've been losing fifty to seventy dollars a year, that's, that's like bullshit.
You know, but I mean, if you think talking to them would work better, that's. Get a plan then.
So we'll have to plan something out here.
Yeah, do that.
We, along those lines, we have found that there are a couple of. Hydrants or a couple of backyard spigots that are on their own meter. And not having sewer charges on them. And there's a handful of them. Um, we're working on finding those and just putting a kibosh on that. You know what? Last year, when it was a dry year, there was tons of residents that called and said, I don't wanna pay sewer on. The garden watering. I. And so if we let a handful of residents do it, but we tell everyone else that they can't, that shouldn't be either, so.
That's, that's kind of hard, you know, we have a lot of people that water in their yard nonstop. You know, we, it's not going in the sewer.
Yeah, it's not, but how, but how do we know that? I mean, so the alternative is to either let everyone have a second meter or let no one. You know, like, you can't have five or six people in the town that have gotten to do this for years and then tell everybody else, no, we don't do that. So.
Everybody do the same.
So, um, I mean, you guys need to decide what, what it has been happening. Like I said, it's, there's a handful.
You're talking like the garden areas.
The garden areas, and there's a couple, um. There is one uh, on an apartment building that's like the back spigot, so it has its own meter with no sewer charges on it.
Spaces, city garden can have.
City garden is separate cuz that's not, yeah. And that's not necessarily built to one entity, you know? So, we're working on finding some of those things, and so there might be a couple of. Residents that aren't happy about that, but the alternative, I mean, last, last summer, we. Every week, we had several residents ask. You know, why do I have to pay sewer on my garden? Well, because we're not, we're not gonna let. Yeah, we're not gonna let everyone do that.
No, you gotta do more.
So we're kind of finding a few of those things that we're, we're trying to. Sort out and, well, this was grandfathered in for this reason or whatever. There's gonna be those anomalies. The pool is one that's an anomaly. We don't charge them sewer charges. That's something different, that's, you know, so trying to pick, yeah.
You know, I mean, having bad flushers are gonna be ten gallon gallons.
Yeah, so there's.
Speaking of that water, what's the condition of that west cell out there now? Does that fit?
No, Brian's coming this week. They've been busy, yeah. Yeah, this week is the fastest he can be up here.
Is there any water in there or you're not?
There, there's some, yeah. I got one more thing, I guess. I had some guys at the shop, or I wanted to know why, since they switched to real water. It gets this black crap built up in their toilets. I think it's still cleaning out the lines from back in the old days. That's what they tell us.
Uh, is it anybody that's like on the end of the line? If anybody's on the end of the line, you're gonna get it.
Nick Chaver, his shop. It's funny, he showed me a picture, and it all, and what about tar coming out of his faucet? And I said, well, how's the house? I go, well, house doesn't bother. Never had it in the house, but it's, but it shops.
I wonder that's down, you know, and I wonder if he hasn't getting all this drainage going down. To the shop.
Still get little black plates and toilets and, you know.
Yeah, you only get a black ring around it. Anybody that's close to the end of the line.
I don't know, they are there. They're not used much to it.
Gary was complaining about, you know, the brownings toilets.
My gathering center, they've had trouble forever. Bringing the toilets, the tubs.
Yeah, yeah, so, that's what, I mean, they told us it's been a day years, they get all that old crap on the water lines, you know, but.
Then you got your private lines too.
Yeah.
That, yeah, for a while.
And that's about all you can tell them is it's just, it's still flooding. Pay some bills?
It's a little hefty. Well, Ferguson was. Remember, let me look it up. Yes. Water meters were more expensive than I had. Ferguson was a. Yes.
Someone pressure gauge, just a little tool we can hook up to see if uh, there's leaks in houses now.
And chlorine powder.
Yeah, and chlorine for test our samples. Yeah, it's just a pressure valve. You uh, hook it up where the meter goes, shut curb stuff off, and if it drops pressures, a leak from the curb stuff out.
Oh, oh, there, yeah, I documented in the house. They already have a detector.
Yeah. Yeah.
That was that cost?
Pressure valve?
Yeah.
Well, I mean, bill was twenty-eight thousand.
No, we didn't have the bill. We just hit order.
They're on.
Oh, yeah.
A little more than.
A little more than twelve, we thought. Care of, that's why I was trying to figure out what.
They were on order, but we finally got charged for them. That was a while. Yeah. We were backordered or something, right? Yeah.
Anyway.
Saying something. How do you go about changing the wheel sign to the stop sign? It's up to you, just you guys can make that decisions. So, um, corner of the second and seventh, this is such a blind corner.
That is a bad area.
Yeah, it's, it's got a yield now, needs to stop.
You got some stops. Second and second, it's uh, Nikleisen's. That big pine tree of Nikleisen's is covering the whole corner.
You got signs or?
Yeah.
Switching.
I think, I'd maybe put a notice in the paper that they would switch to.
Whenever we switch signs, Doug sits up for weeks and watches. Doug, I got a question for you. So, all these little motorized scooters, these kids are running around. There's one runner out in town, looks. Big fat parents, he comes running across my street, front of my house, and he's going, he's heckin'. If anybody's coming down thirty thousand, he's gonna get wiped out.
We see them, they have, we make them wear helmets on. Cause I got little kids riding minibikes now, and they're going down, they're taking the alleys and going out by the golf oven in the ditch, which is fine, it's out of my hair, fuck. You know, technically, they're not supposed to be driving. No, they got it just like a snowmobile. Take your quickest route out of town.
I just wonder what. Oh, anybody have something else?